Hey, Michelle.
Hi, how are you?
Good. The proclamation to be signed. I was supposed to come in today, I think. I'll come in tomorrow. Like, do I just need to shoot you a text and let you know, or will you be around tomorrow?
Yeah, yep. Just shoot me a text or call me and I can just open up the door with my phone.
Okay, alright. Is there a better time for you?
No, anytime is fine.
Okay. Should I call you at your office, or can I shoot you a text on your cellphone, or doesn't it matter?
It doesn't matter. I'll be there probably by 7:45 in the morning, so.
Okay, I just didn't know if the door trick needed me to call one way or the other.
No, I can do that from anywhere.
Okay.
Have a nice feature with our new doors, actually.
Yeah, because I was thinking, I mean, you're a long ways from a door if you need to welcome a visitor.
Right.
Hey, Mary.
Hey, Brad.
Mary, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I was just a little concerned because my my computer has recently died and I'm waiting for a new one to come, and so I'm using my iPad tonight, which I hadn't used before, so I was concerned that if there would be anything different, but it pretty much looks the same.
Yeah, I'm having issues too. I got a new computer at work and I always go back and forth between my work computer and our city computer because I like to have the agenda up and have Zoom up. And I'm struggling with my new work computer. So I can't get my phone to go on Do Not Disturb. So I'm a little concerned my phone's going to ring during our meeting. I think I'm just gonna have to take it off the hook. Because my ShoreTel keeps telling me it's not working.
That's who monitors your phones at Seattle?
Yeah, it's called ShoreTel. It's the company, I guess. It's asking for my server. What? I don't need any of this stuff. I just need to contact your No, I just wanted to work like it did this morning. Just because I got a new computer shouldn't mean that my voicemail and everything else goes away. But apparently it did. Didn't know that.
Well, I hate buying computers, but my computer pretty much just died. And so but I'm an Apple person and the Apple stores are closed, so I had to order the computer.
Well, they're not closed because I walked by two of them yesterday or on Saturday and they were both full.
They're appointment only.
I went to 12 Oaks Mall and Briarwood.
So at Briarwood, they would not let me order, they wouldn't let me come there to buy a computer.
Their appointment only.
I tried to make a damn appointment and they wouldn't let me. You know, that's part of the problem when you talk to people who just don't know. I mean, I wasn't talking to anybody at Briarwood.
Yeah.
You know, the Apple website is so massive. And so anyway, where I should be able to drive there and buy the computer I want, now I'm waiting a month. And it's aggravating.
Yep. I hate buying anything online.
Well, I just hate buying computers.
That too.
Yeah.
Because you never know, like what's good, what's bad. Apparently my new laptop does not.
Hi, Gordon.
Hey, Brad, how are you tonight?
Well, how are you?
Very well, Jeff. Have a happy holiday.
I did. I did. Did you?
I did. I did. Actually, today's kind of special. I'm down in Columbus with my family. Today was my daughter, my granddaughter's first birthday. So we've been having fun today.
How tired are you, Grandpa?
I'm tired. Yes, I am tired. But she had a good time, so that's was the important.
Why you're there?
We're coming back tomorrow.
Good to see the city made it for a couple of days without the general around.
Well, you know, I'm quite frankly shocked that it has. You know, the funny thing, when we left Sunday morning, it was snowing and the roads were crapping. We got till it went dry and it was dry the rest of the way south.
Was it really?
Absolutely. We thought we were gonna have to turn back when we first left and
Yeah, it was pretty nice.
Yeah, couldn't believe how dry it was.
Is she walking yet?
No, but man, she is very, very close. She's she's standing up on her own now in the middle of the room, not holding on to anything. And then she plops on her butt and then, but yeah, it's real, it's real close. Within a couple of weeks, she's gonna be.
Greg, one thing we did not go over when you and I met, I just didn't think about it, is probably we should have you do the little speech.
Speech, yeah, well.
We've had another Zoom bombing incident. Probably should do it for both of us on the regular meeting. Thanks.
Okay, I was just pulling it out, in fact.
See, you read my mind.
In anticipation of your thoughts.
Greg, if you want to go ahead and give your talk, your speech.
Will do. Good evening, everyone. I'm City Administrator Greg Elliott. And I'd like to address a few things before the mayor requests the roll call. This is the pre-meeting, which is a forum for the city commission to discuss various issues and topics. For much of the meeting, we asked the participants to mute themselves to allow the commissioners to have their discussions and minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. An opportunity for public comment will be provided at the end of the pre-meeting. And participants will be invited at that time to unmute and address the commission if they wish. We've talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill this screen with objectionable content. If this occurs during the meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of the meeting to law enforcement for investigation. We hope to conduct our meeting free of this sort of interruption, but will temporarily shut down the meeting if this happens. Thank you for all for participating and Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you for the roll call.
Thank you. We will now begin the pre-meeting study session for Monday, January 4th, 2021. And we'll start that with a roll call, please, Robin.
There he is.
Present.
Mr. Halt.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
She's there. She was there.
Present.
There you go.
All commission members present.
Greg, I guess you can start. I guess you're gonna turn it right back to me, but
I'm just gonna turn it right back over to you, but I will start by saying the first item is our continuing discussion of an outside legal opinion. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
So I know that, you know, we had discussed, we wanted more specific and everybody wanted some time to think about that and what you wanted. Here's just a general right now. And so it definitely needs to be elaborated on if we want to get more specific, which I do believe we do. But you know, something along the lines of reviewing the City of Adrian Charter and all relevant laws related to the appropriate roles of the city's public officials and their relationships to each other and to the city commission. I mean, that's a very general statement, obviously, and I know we wanted to get more specific as we go out there to to get outside legal counsel. So I guess this is discussion time, so discuss. Like, what, you know, is that a good starting point? Do you want, you know, like, tell me where you would like to see that maybe elaborated on and what, you know, what we exactly want them looking at?
I guess I'll go first. I was a supporter of this, the last pre-meeting we talked about. As we, as we kind of ventured through this and discussed this issue. I'm not too sure I support it anymore. I think that we need to be bosses and we need to be very direct. And I think this is something the city commission should handle without, you know, paying for that kind of service. I think Commissioner Watson said it best last time when he says it's like a burden of money and what we're dealing with is just communication issues. And I think the city commission can handle that without having to pay somebody to tell us what we should be doing in the first place. The charter clearly defines the three employees that the city commission controls when it comes from a managerial standpoint. So I still see, I still think it's very smart to spend money, taxpayer money on an opinion, because once you get that opinion, I think that, you know, we could get another outside attorney and give us a different opinion of how they interpret the charter too. The charter is all about interpretation. So I guess I'm changing my position. Originally, last committee, I want to go back to we need to be bosses and we need to take care of this ourselves, but I'm interested to hear everybody else's thoughts on that too, so.
Well, one of my thoughts on that, Commissioner Halt, is so I know part of this came about, so I guess I'd like to hear what your thoughts are on this. That as a commission, we have many different thoughts on what these exact roles are. We're not, we're not on the same, I don't know if I want to say the same page, but we're just not agreeing exactly with what the exact roles are when it relates to us, when it relates to the public officials to each other. So I agree, I feel that we could handle it if we were all on the same page, so I guess I'm just putting that out there as well.
That's why we vote, though. I think that's why we vote. I don't think we'll ever have the same opinion. All of us shouldn't have the same opinion and that's why we vote on decisions. But I, in looking at the charter, I agree with Alan. I think the jobs are spelled out accurately. I don't think their job should be explicitly lined up for them. That's not what true leadership is. And I think that we shouldn't, we don't need to be all be on the same page and that's why we vote on what's happening.
For what it's worth, I agree well with Commissioner Castleberry and Commissioner Halt. I've read, I don't know how many times I've read the charter, but I've run it many, many times. And it's pretty explicit. I mean, if you read it and you understand the, you know, English language, you pretty much can figure out what it says. And I don't see the need to spend taxpayer monies to try to redefine what we already know it says. You know, a lot of months ago, we had an issue where we were trying to replace an empty seat with, for a commissioner. And we read the charter and the city attorney read the charter and none of us really liked what it said. But it said what it said. But we went to court and tried to get declaratory relief and the judge says, it says what it says. You guys were reading it correctly. So, you know, I'm not gonna change anything. It is what it is. But I think, I agree with, like I said, with Commissioner Halt and Castleberry. You know, we're in the role of a management group right now and we need to work our way through that. I guess there will be disagreements and we have to talk those out. And if there's an issue as to what the charter says, maybe we need to have a meeting, a special meeting, whatever. I don't think it has to be closed or anything else. I think we sit down with the charter and go through it line by line and discuss it. And the public can see us discuss it, but I think the issue for me is we've been elected as public officials to do our job. And I just think we'll be skirting our responsibilities if we don't, you know, pick it up and go forward now.
In defense of Mayor Heath, I think she's, that comment came from me last time about the, about the, you know, the city commission can't come to an agreement on what rules rules. But the more I thought about it over his last two weeks, the more I'm thinking the charter is black and white. It's our constitution. The job duties and roles are spelled out very directly. It's our job to make sure the charter is upheld and make sure the charter is enforced to the fullest extent. So I don't need anybody to tell me that. I mean, that's, and it goes against everything I am for when it just, when it comes to spending money on something like that that we should be handling. But I totally agree, Mayor. I did make that comment last time, but we should, we should give them the same understanding on how we interpret it, but really, it's black and white. And I don't think the three employees we control from a managerial standpoint, I think that all their job descriptions are laid out. I think we need to hold them accountable as such. So that means smaller subcommittees, that means whatever, but I think that like, like Commissioner Castleberry said, we're all not gonna agree. And that's, and that's what makes government great, so.
Well, I'll jump in here and say that three days ago, I called Commissioner Watson basically with the same thoughts on my mind that I wasn't comfortable with the discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago. And I thought it was something that we should work out between us. And so I guess from what I'm hearing tonight, it sounds like everybody is pretty much in agreement.
It's what makes government fun. It's like we all, we all don't, we all don't agree on everything. That's what's great about it. We can all shake hands afterwards and, and so forth, but I don't, I didn't feel good about last meeting, you know, after it was over and like, understanding that we're gonna have to pay money to have somebody tell us what's clearly spelled out in our, in our City of Adrian's constitution, so it just doesn't sit well with me. So again, I'm only one person on the dais, so I'm interested to hear everybody else's thoughts on it.
It has bothered me from the beginning, even though, you know, I know, I know I brought this from conversations, individual conversations I had with you, it did bother me that, okay, we're gonna get an outside legal opinion and Commissioner Watson could be a lawyer and come in and give a completely different legal opinion and then Commissioner Castleberry could be a lawyer coming and giving a completely different, you know, it's just one opinion and, and that did have, that did make me a little leery of that process because it's just someone's interpretation. And we were gonna pay for that when we can do that, you know, that, that. And I felt after our last conversation, and I know that everyone really wanted to think about it and it sounds like that's what happened. Everybody thought about it for these past couple of weeks and really digested it and thought about it. It didn't sit well with me after the last meeting as well. It's just kind of sat there and not sat well. I don't really know how to describe it, but it just that I didn't feel like it was going to accomplish anything and help us in the long run. And I have always been nervous about spending money on something that that in this realm, when there's so many other needs out there and I feel like, you know, that, that we can work as a commission to work on this.
I guess I'll chime in. So I'm not convinced that the charter is black and white in these areas and whose roles are whose. But I do believe that we are all intelligent working adults who've been in jobs with job descriptions that are a little gray. And I do think that we can as a group, come up with some guidelines and come up with a majority of agreements on, on where we want to go with these positions and the communication between the positions and us. I don't believe that we need someone else to tell us that we can we can figure this out. It's just gonna take a little time. It's gonna take some willingness on all of us to listen to each other and say, well, I think this says this. And someone else is gonna say, well, I think it says that. And we will need to come to some sort of consensus on some things, maybe not everything. But we will have to have some consensus at the end.
My position is unchanged. Since our first discussion on this matter, I felt like this could be handled by us as a competent group of commissioners. I just, you know, I, I think there's some urgency to the matter. And so we need, we can't, like, this can't get kicked another two weeks. My opinion is, is we need to, whether it's pick three to sit down and to tackle this, or if it's to schedule a meeting, I would prefer just to pick three and just say, hey, tackle it and keep us informed.
Here, here.
The only issue I've got with that commissioner, whatever your name is.
Watson.
Watson, yeah. I'm sitting here looking at your picture and saying Commissioner Bradley. My concern is we're gonna end up, we have the potential of ending up in the same place we are today. We got three people will come back with a decision for this, you know, for seven. And we're gonna have a couple of people who don't like what was said there and we're still gonna have this division. Whereas if we all participate, and I know that's difficult and I know sitting us all in a room, we may not get exactly the agreement that we want. But we've got to be adults about this. We've got, we're gonna sit there and, you know, we've got to, you know, compromise and do all of those things. I just, I don't know that I'm comfortable, you know, sitting back and saying, okay, you tell me what you think, you know, the three people come back and tell us what you think and we'll all live with it. I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with that.
Um, I mean, I guess I'm at the different side of that with, with the commission, with the commission at hand. I think it can be. And I think it, it's, it's a, yeah, yeah. And my point is that pulling the seven together to just kind of put down some guidance to clarify job descriptions, to roles, responsibilities and things like that, it's gotta be live. It can't, it's got, you know, a couple of hours in a conference room. And, and the solution is figured out by parties involved. And we leave and uphold people to that. I don't think there's anybody on this commission in any way, shape or form that's gonna sway that outside the realm of acceptability.
So it definitely, I mean, it doesn't definitely, it for sure sounds that, you know, that we definitely want to take care of this problem, you know, I don't wanna call it a problem, take care of this situation that we're trying to maneuver right now and trying to figure out what we think the charter says, but let's do this on our, as a commission on our own. And let's, let's, let's sit some people down together and, and figure this out. So we will not seek outside counsel because it doesn't sound like that's what anybody wants to do. You know, I know now that we've had time to really think about it and digest, it sounds like everybody, I can assume, yes, everybody's feeling that way from this discussion, that we don't want to do that. And so all right. Are we, I have, I have some thoughts. I had already been thinking about this for a long time before, even before the last meeting. I have some thoughts about, you know, three people that are, you know, commissioners, are you okay if, if I go that route and choose three commissioners to sit down to go over this? It will not be me. It's three commissioners, by the way.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Okay, because I already, I already have had some, some thoughts and from individual conversations with many of you and just giving it a lot of thought. So I would like to tackle that ASAP. So I will be reaching out to you and we will get on that immediately. Does that sound like a good plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Greg, at this point, I'm gonna turn it back over Greg, at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to you then.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. So our second pre-meeting topic is about our downtown art sculpture project that we've had for some number of years, I think technically called the Midwest Sculpture Initiative. I don't know that any of us really understand the complete history of that or or where funding has come from in the past. I think it's, it's a project that has been funded to the tune of about $10,000 a year, as I understand it. And half of that has come from the fee estate and half of it has come from other sources. In addition to to paying for that project, there is also the task which is not an insubstantial task of of selecting the works of art that will be displayed downtown from year to year. And so we have had the folks from Plainwave reach us to, reach out to us about partnering with us this year on this, and that makes some sense as the artist group that has been involved is kind of located on their campus. And so Rick Hedrick and Chris Miller from Plainwave are here tonight. And on the on the one hand, I want to let them talk about their ideas for partnering. And then, on the other hand, I want you as a commission to have an opportunity to to talk about the structure that you would like to see representation on that committee this year and how that will, how they'll be selected. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rick and Chris, if they want to speak to you.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, we just, we, you know, I I I'm new here. I've seen the, you know, what's been going on and the, you know, the art in the city. And, you know, we're, we work closely with the ACA and with Ken Thompson. And anything we can do to help to keep this thing going, we're happy to do. You know, we are willing to put some money in and to help try and, you know, raise the rest of the money to get the 5,000 that doesn't come from the the city side. And we're we're happy to do that, and I don't know if you have anything more to say about that, Chris. But, you know, we love to see it continue. It's a, it's a neat program and we sort of have a, we have some of the art, you know, is on our, that we worked out with Ken Thompson too, is on our campus. So we just, we, from the very beginning, wanted to support the arts and so seemed like an opportunity here. Maybe someone was needed to help out a little bit.
I have a question, how is this different from what we've done in the past?
It's different in that Plainwave is offering to help us raise some of the money, number one. And I think potentially it will be different as to what the composition of the committee is and how those folks are selected. And I know, I know Chris knows a lot about the history of it, and it might be helpful if he could share a little bit of that with us.
Yeah, happy to to give a bit of background. So the the program was really started about eight years ago when Ken Thompson approached us. And we were aware he had, as Greg pointed out, the Midwest Sculpture Initiative. So essentially what Ken does is canvas artists across the country and ask them to provide sculptures that he then leases out on an annual basis. Ken does this in about 20 different communities and with some, there's some businesses in there as well. And we got on board using initially the fee estate and then money that we raised from the community. So the business community kicked in, individuals kicked in some as well. And then for a number of years, that that $5,000, so 10, that that's the correct number, Greg, $10,000. And we've always taken 5,000 from the fee estate and then raised the rest. Primarily that happened through grants, the grants dried up in the last couple of years. And so kind of knowing that and knowing that Plainwave was committed to the arts. Rick and I talked about whether Plainwave could kind of start that project with an injection of cash and then work with the business community and others in the community to raise the $5,000 to match the five that Matt would have in his budget that had been dedicated to this. So essentially, we just would like to continue to do that. In terms of the composition of the selection committee, we have historically had representation from Adrian College, Santa Heights University, the Adrian Center for the Arts. I think Mayor Heath, you served on that last year, if my recollection is right. So we've had someone from the city, including myself, throughout the the time period as well. Obviously, a Plainwave will want a seat at the table, the selection table, as we're going to take the lead on the, on the $5,000 match. But apart from that, you know, we're happy to have anybody from the city or the DDA or and and we would go back to that same group of community members that have been, there's been a core of five or six people who have made that selection for the entire history of the program. Does that answer your question?
Definitely, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I I'm I'm in huge support of this, and I think that there's a model in place that I don't think we need to rattle much, other than the financial backing. And I I think if that's all that needs to happen, let's do whatever it needs to take to get that financial backing going.
I I thought, from serving on it last year, it was right before the pandemic, literally right before. And it was, I I thought it was a very good, true representation of our art community that was there for that, choosing those sculptures. I I I had already discussed this with our city administrator that I just thought it was a really good representation of of our art community in in a very strong sense, and I would really like to see that continue. The one thing I would like to see is I would like to see personally, somebody from DDA also on there though, as well. A representation from the DDA, just as as well, just because they're all in that downtown area. So I I would also like to see that, but that would be the only addition. I I thought, I think everybody that has served before should continue to serve. I I just thought it was a really great representation.
So if I can just make one minor correction, the the sculptures have not always been in the DDA. And in fact, that's probably the reason that the DDA didn't sort of take ownership. So it has been typically around the downtown, but not all necessarily in the physical DDA, so.
I think it's a great idea, and Chris, I thank you for continuing to do this. My comment would be, everyone sees art differently, especially depending on their background. But I think also depending on their age. So if there's any way we could try and get different age groups involved in choosing the art, that would be wonderful.
It was pretty diversified in age last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, we we typically have, yeah. We've asked the colleges typically to bring students, and most years we have had students in the mix. So it has been a pretty diverse group. And even looking at the representation from the colleges, you know, we had some pretty young professors and some professors that were more seasoned.
Perfect, you know what you're doing then, thank you.
I'm good with it.
I think, I think it's great, and I think we should recognize Plainwave for their willingness to be a good corporate citizen and support the arts in Adrian. I mean, that's when we talk about wanting to have a good corporate citizen, so a perfect example of it.
Well said, Gordon.
And everybody loves those sculptures. And we get a lot of comments when I, when out of town people come here, it seems like that's what gets talked about a lot. I mean, it it really does. So I think, and I I think the dialogue last year, when they were deciding because it was such a diversified group of people, that that is why they had such great dialogue and really put a lot of thought and really picked sculptures that would appeal to the younger, would appeal to the older. They, they were looking at all of that as they, as they were choosing them. And and I thought that that it was just a really great collaboration. And thank you for inviting me to be a part of that last year, Chris, that was great. And I I just really enjoyed that, and I just really, it was really great to see community members getting involved that maybe necessarily want it, but they're getting involved because they're in, they're in the art field and they they came and participated in that. So thank you, Rick, from Plainwave, very much appreciated. You are always so appreciative and supportive of our arts here in in Adrian. I know that's one thing that brought you here, that you liked the how cultural, how how artistic and culturally artistic it was here. And we just really thank you for supporting that.
Thank you too.
Our pleasure.
So would it be fair to say that we'd like one member of the commission and one one DDA board member to participate?
Makes sense to me.
Along with the historic composition of the committee. Okay, I think we can move forward with that. Anything more on that topic? Not, then our next item is the library cafe. So as you know from my weekly reports, you know, we've had issues with rent being in arrears and in compliance with some of our operational expectations for the current tenant at the library cafe. City attorney did terminate their tenancy as of the end of last year, 2020. Not, they were on a month-to-month status, and it wasn't meant to necessarily be the end of our relationship with them, but to draw a line under the prior relationship and establish a new one going forward, if that's who we're going to continue to have in the space. You did get a, an email, hopefully all of you got to see it, from Mr. Benke on behalf of the library board today with his thoughts on it. And I believe Jim may be here tonight. I don't see her, but there's a phone number I don't recognize, our library director. Oh, there she is, I'm sorry, got her camera on and everything, and I like, lost her. So she'll be able to speak to this herself. But the discussion I hope to have tonight is is really what you would like to see in that space going forward. If you're happy with the way it's operating now, there, as I say, there have been some operational challenges that probably Jen can describe better than, better than I. And so I'll, at this point, I'll let her talk to you, and then I'll pick it up after that.
Sure, thank you. One of the things, if you've been in the library, one of the one of the issues that we have is the fact that the, their, their storage spaces on the lower level below the cafe. And then their commercial kitchen is actually across the main floor of the library. So there is a gate kind of similar to like what you would see with stores in a mall that comes down. And they have not been, they haven't been pulling that gate down, which wasn't a big issue until they started extending their hours on Fridays and Saturdays. And then they're also open on Sundays when we're closed. So part of the issue there is that they're leaving a good portion of the library, it's just left. I I'm concerned about the security issues there, where they have one employee and we're not, there aren't a library staff at the time. So that's, you know, one of the main concerns that that we have had with that space is is that gate basically not being pulled down and utilized. I do, you know, we've, a couple of the other issues, from my standpoint, we pay for the, there's no separation of utilities. For, so we're paying utilities for that space for the most part, whereas they're paying and they're paying rent to the city. So that's another concern that I have. So again, I mean, if you have, anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer, answer them. But those are the the library's concerns right now.
Do you have any concern, I I know they do cooking, not in the, what was traditionally the commercial kitchen, as you mentioned, but rather within their cafe space there. Are there any issues that you have with the aromas from the cooking?
We have occasionally had some issues. We've had a couple of complaints from people. It's not, I wouldn't say that it's a, it's a real common ongoing thing. You know, it's like sometimes you forget, occasionally things have burnt and the aroma has stuck around a little bit longer than normal. But it's not, I wouldn't say that that's a typical problem.
And does the library, if if we were not to continue with the current, does the library have a proposed use for that space that you would, to which you would prefer to put it?
We, we are definitely interested in the space. We have several ideas, nothing that's completely fleshed out at this time. But one of the things that we've considered is just some additional seating for the library. One of, we're going through our strategic planning process right now, and one of the things that we're finding, we have a large meeting room space in our lower level, but it's not able to be broken down into smaller. And we, and we can, we can't break it down completely into smaller rooms. So one of the things that we're finding, you know, it could be an additional meeting room space for people. We have kicked around, we have a friends of the library group, and we have a, they sell books, used books. So we thought about maybe trying to work with them and do something with, along those lines. And then I, you know, we've also kicked around some ideas regarding. You know, we hear, I hear during our delicious from people, vendors that might like to have, they don't have the financial means to set up a storefront downtown. But maybe we could, you know, could the space be used to that way for different vendors on occasion to sell things? So, I mean, we do have ideas and we are definitely interested, should the space become available. We are definitely interested in taking that over.
I'd like to weigh in on this and say that back, whatever was 10 or 11 years ago, when the the original coffee shop opened up, I used that space as an office. And the original concept was you have the library there, you had a coffee shop. It seemed like a pretty good marriage, and in the beginning, it worked well. But it seems like we've gone way off the rails now, things have changed a lot. And in my opinion, the library should have control of that space and let, let them make the decisions on how they want to use it. Times have changed, and like I said, 10 or 11 years ago, it seemed like a really good idea. But it's just, just not working now, and and I think we should let the library use it the way they want to use it.
I I agree with you, Commissioner, sir, why do we even have a voice in this, I guess, is my question. Like, bring me, bring me up to speed as to why this is our matter. And then especially if if it's a matter of, I mean, if somebody hasn't paid rent. Then it, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that just are kind of sideways in my mind that don't make sense. And and I visited the cafe this weekend, just for, in preparation for this discussion. And it's a retail shop, and it's on the front of our library. And it doesn't feel right, it doesn't look right. I mean, I'm glad, I mean, she had a little bit business going this weekend when I was down there, and it was in the middle of the afternoon on Saturday. And, I mean, good for her, and but take it to the appropriate spot, and that doesn't feel like it's the appropriate spot.
Yeah, to answer your question, Commissioner Watson, it is our building, and we leased the library as well. At some point in the past, we, as as Commissioner Strayer pointed out, we decided we wanted to marry that with a, with a sort of a coffee shop that would complement the library's tenancy. The end of the day, the library would really like to own that building, but because of the way it was financed, that's about 12 years away from being able to become reality. We can't transfer ownership for that period of time, given the bonds that were sold to renovate the various city properties downtown. And so, you know, we, we went into it with, as I understand it, of course, wasn't involved at that time with the idea of, the the original tenant had failed, and and we, we'd look for somebody who could continue on. The rent has, for all, it's been $300 a month, and that doesn't include utilities. Or it does include utilities, rather, as the library director pointed out. And so we're essentially subsidizing the operation as I see it. And I, it isn't, you know, well, they, they're to be commended for standing the toe. They're to be commended for standing the test of time. That has not been with an appropriate recognition of the expenses of having a downtown space in my opinion.
I I just think there's, there's the continuity of that business, even though it's our building. We've, we've got a library director who's, who was on our, our call right now, they have their own board. That makes it feel like the confines of that building should be their direction. In 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 not our direction to tell them, because that's what happened, that's what's happening right now is. It's not necessarily a complimentary business to to their function and it's, it feels like it should be. There's no back to it, like you look into the library. You know, if that was like a store, like a carved off storefront, I think I'd feel differently about it, but there's no back to it, it's just like part of the library. So it should complement the library, the library should have some control or most all control over it. In my eyes.
Yeah, I think that when we did this lease agreement, I believe like three or four years ago, laughing crap if I'm wrong, but. It was empty for a while and then they were trying to get some tenant to go in there, they even. You know, former administrator Horn and former mayor, mayor Barryman tried to get me to go down there and I said, I already have two stores in Seattle, I don't want another one downtown, so. But I, I think Commissioner Watson's right, I mean, you know. Once that millet's passed, I I understand we own the building, but. Getting, getting the library operations off our books, I think is. You know, we own the building, but I would see them control what aspects go on that building, even though we do own it, because essentially. You know, the voters own it essentially, so that's why that mill is passed, so. I think they should have complete control of it, like how, how many months are they in arrears of their rent, right?
It's, it's about $2,400 as we show it, so at $300 a month, that's, you know, quite, quite a few months.
I mean, what landlord would let that ride, why have we let that ride so long?
Well, that's a good question, but.
And and that's not to be solved tonight, but I think that, I mean, I think that. You know, one possible solution is, is, you know, allow the library to control that. And also, you know, minimally raise their rent, maybe it could be an opportunity for them to. Improve their cash flow to do other things associated with their main focus or core or, you know, whether it sounds like they got some. Little boutique kind of businesses, startups or something like that, and might want that. And maybe it's short term leases that they do, that's their, that's their. Asset to solve as to how they they maximize the cash flow on that, but. Again, we're out of touch with that and they're in touch with it because it's their building, I mean, they're the. In good standing tenant that should, has the figure on that pulse. I, I, yeah.
Yeah, I will say, as to the rent point, the, the cafe proprietors have a, a different view of that, that they contend that. When administrator Horn was here, he had. Had waived that because they weren't open yet, but that's what. And and as I said, the, yeah, the larger problem. It seemed to me and why I wanted to bring it before you is the operational aspects, it isn't. It isn't meshing as I view it with the library operations and they. They're prior to the gate problem, there was the. Corral around the library seating area that had been created. In lieu of that and we we did ultimately succeed in getting them to take that down, but. That was extremely unsightly and detracted from the library.
Well, I think with the the situation with the lease where it is, is not being in standing. As well as a willingness and an interest of our library. Executive Director and the Board of controlling that, I think that's the direction that we should go. And and, I mean. You know, i- if it's a tenant issue, I think that that we need to take care of our tenant issue. Before turning the control over, we don't want to just give the library dirty laundry. But if it's a not, then they can work out the the agreement with the, with that business.
Again, let me say that I was there in the beginning. I was there before they actually opened up the library after the renovations, when they built the coffee house. I had many discussions about this whole process with Carol, the librarian at the time. And I'll tell you, there is no way that Carol would have ever approved that type of business. In her library, she ran a tight ship and there was no way that would ever happen. When she first opened Stones Cafe was the cafe that was in there. They basically made coffee, they had sandwiches and things, but they were made at another location. And after Stones Cafe went out. Some ladies came in who were going to try to continue the coffee thing, but they made cookies. And so then they had to start making the cookies on the other side of the library. And at that point, I thought this whole thing is just dysfunctional. And from that point, the problem has just continued to grow. So when I look at what's there now, I just think there is no way that that. That business plan would have ever floated in the very beginning. So, you know, I just think we need to cut it off. Give that space to the library, they're the ones who know how to use that space best. Again, in the, the situation with having to go into the basement. First, for them to keep their supplies in the basement, horrible security issue, so. It's just, you know, I, again, I looked at it from the beginning and I just, I can only imagine Carol's head spinning around. If she saw what was going on today. And it's no fault of the, of the library staff today, this was just the hand that they were, they were dealt with. And we need to take care of the problem for them.
Problem is growing and I think Brad is also right because the problem is that the library doesn't have control of that. So I think that the problem is growing because they're the ones there and we're. Don't have control of that, but I also, you're right, there is security, but there's also a ton of liability issues with the. Library being open like that and people being inside it and and nobody being able to see them, that really worries me.
Okay, well, if there are no other thoughts or comments on that, I think that direction is clear and we can. Move forward on that basis. All right, Mary, that's all the items I had on the. Prepared agenda, turn it back over to you for any other items.
So do any commissioners have any other items they would like to discuss before I open it up for public comment?
One thing, and Commissioner Strayer and I have talked about this briefly. The old Coleman Concrete property, is there any activity on that or any inactivity, I mean, like. The progressive thinking as to how we can. Work with that to make sure it's a positive add and not a truck yard that goes in there or not, you know. Or or is there any thoughts around that to to make sure that that's, that's an asset for the city and not a. A piece of property that we're not proud of?
Again, Commissioner Watson, it cut out of my end, I just didn't hear it.
The Coolman Concrete across from the, you know, old bales.
Commissioner Watson, as I sit here, I don't know what the zoning of that property is, but I would suspect that that was a nonconforming use when it, when it was there. And of course, it's been demolished now. Well, no similar use could be reestablished. We're just about to get into the process of developing our new future land use plan for the, for the comprehensive plan and. That will prescribe a use for that area and I venture to say it's unlikely.
Yeah, I just think it's, it's, it's got potential if it's not, you know. Contaminated or a floodplain or or something that makes it globally unappealing, but I mean. Yeah, I I I hope that we put some vision behind it. And Lad, I don't know if you want to jump in, but based on our discussion, but somebody that we put some vision behind it and and kind of. Do whatever we can to attract the right stuff or to encourage the right kind of development to go there.
I I agree, you know, we had good discussion about it, I've had discussion with Mary also and, you know. Potentially could be part of the Trussell Park, but at the same time, I'd like to see it. Have some revenue source for us for property taxes too, I, I mean, I think it'd be a great spot for a housing development or whatever, and I think if we. Play our cards right and, you know, we, we reach out to some developers and see if they want to get creative, I think it's a great location for housing.
Any other? Things that the commissioners would like to bring up? Thank you Commissioner Watson, that, that property is bothering me as well, so. And I know Commissioner Roberts walks your dog, walks by, because I see her there all the time, so I'm sure it's bothered her too, because she walks by it every day, so.
I do, and I've been watching to see what would happen, I do question. What the remediation will be for the land, for the soil, I don't know what kind of contamination would be in there, but I would really like to hear if there is. This concrete create contamination in the soil, I don't, I just don't know. I had, did have another discussion related to this, but with the. With the county owning a lot of the property down there, I believe that that is a floodplain and I'm not sure exactly how much we can build. At least with housing, so that might be something we'll have to look at too. But I would really rather not the county take it over and put more concrete. Stuff that they're not using for five years down there. Because that, you know, the green fence does not, is not appealing, that is up now. So. If there's any way we can discourage that from happening.
In globally speaking, it's not a great location for them, I mean, they don't, they're, that's not, pretty close to the middle of town.
Dan, I don't think you're muted anymore.
I apologize for that.
I agree, I, it's not, it doesn't appear to be a great location to have. The all of the county stuff laid out through that whole swatch there. And it would be really nice if they could be condensed into one area, there's a lot, to me, as someone from the outside. There's a lot of empty space that they are not utilizing. And if there's any way that that can be condensed, so maybe they go from the three properties that they own down to just one and we could. Use the other two properties, that would be wonderful. As someone who walks by it every single day. And has never liked, even if they could just clean up some of the stuff. And we have a great partnership with the county and I don't want them to feel like I'm complaining, it would, you know, but there's always room for improvement.
And I I know we need to get to public comment here in a minute, but that brought up another thing that I actually wanted, I wanted to bring up because I just saw it. I know that Glenn Preston had mentioned this to me a while back, that at one point we had gone for a grant to. That we were going to try to work with the county to take down the old Jefferson School and I I saw that. They've got it back up, I think it's like a thousand dollars, the county is trying to sell that again, is there any? Thing like that we can look into, like a grant and that's something we can work with the county. Because I know we don't want to buy it and then have to demolish it because we can't do that, I mean, that's what we've discussed in all our Blight meetings is. That's the whole point, we don't have a demolition budget, but. Is there, is there anything like that or can we look into that, Greg, to just see if there's anything available out there, because if there is one thing that I. Brought up to me on a nonstop basis and honestly, I see it all the time too. And think, think the same thing, it it's that, it's that building, it's, it's what the activity that goes on in that building, it's the problems around that building and. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of misconceptions because everybody thinks we own it and I always have to tell people we don't, but. But it's still, it's still a problem, it's in our city limits, it's a problem, it's. Even if we don't own it, I just didn't know if there was any collaboration, if we can relook at that, I I know it was something that. Was kind of in the works before and I'm not really sure what happened and it was several years ago, but. Just to kind of bring up that discussion as well, because that's another one of those big eyesores. And problem buildings.
We can, we can study that issue and see what we can come up with. I mean, we're aware of it obviously, but it hasn't been front burner frankly.
I know that the, the land bank owns that property and they applied for a state grant. I don't know, three or four years ago and got turned down, so I don't know if things would have changed since internet.
I just, I just happened to see it come up, they were trying to sell it and that's how I happened to notice it, that's what, it re-jogged in my brain that they were trying to sell it, so.
Well, if they are successful in getting, getting an offer on it, you know, it would be part of, you would want that to be part of the, of the. Purchase and sale agreement is requirement to demolish or secure it within a certain period of time. I could talk to Marty about that.
Anything else before we head to public comment? Okay, at this time, we are going to go to public comment and please state your name and address if you do give us public comment, thank you.
Mayor, Commissioner's Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. With regards to the property, the Coolman Concrete Property. I think I mentioned the Commissioner Strayer a couple of weeks ago that. The property was obviously for sale and I thought that it'd be a great opportunity for the city to. Address that, it's my understanding, I'm pretty good knowledge, that there's a. Firm offer on that property. By a private individual to buy it. And I think that private individual would probably. Be receptive to. Ideas on how it could be developed and not be detrimental to the area. Just having said that. It's, it's fun to bring it to your attention, okay? Did nobody hear me?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Taylor, appreciate it, that was. Not hearing any other public comment, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move to adjourn, Watson.
Support Strayer.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned and the regular meeting will begin at 7:00 PM, thank you. Okay, Greg, it looks like we have all of our commissioners here. If you want to give your speech, please.
Evening everyone. I'm City Administrator Greg Elliott and it's seven o'clock. I'd like to address a few things before Mayor Heath officially calls us to order. Much of the meeting, we asked the participants, other than the commissioners and staff mute themselves to allow the commission to have their discussions and conduct their business. That will also help to minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. Opportunities for public comment will be offered at different points throughout the meeting. At those times, participants can unmute themselves. We'll have an opportunity to address the commission. At that point, the three minute rule continues to be in effect for public comment. When it is time for public comment, please identify your name and address for the record prior to making your statement. Once we formally begin the meeting, the format and structure will be exactly the same as it is in person and we will work through the agenda items as usual. All commission rules and procedures remain in effect. Talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where virtual meetings interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. This occurs during the meeting tonight. We will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of meeting to law enforcement for investigation. Our agenda is available on our website, as is the packet for tonight's meeting. That's www.adriancity.com. Thank you all for participating. Mayor Heath, I'll turn it over to you.
I call to order the January 4th, 2021 Adrian City Commission Regular Meeting. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence on the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Halt.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry. All commission members present.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the December 21st, 2020 Regular Meeting?
Move to approve the minutes. Roberts.
For Watson.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson. The branch say aye.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
Move we pay the vouchers as presented. Help.
Support Strayer.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
At this time, we would like to honor and, um, and thank and, and have a proclamation of for our Adrian Fire Department, our Adrian Police Department and our emergency, emergency services personnel. So I'm going to read the proclamation. I know several of them are on here tonight. We would love to be doing this, obviously in person and thanking you in person, but cannot at this time. However, um, there are several proclamations that we have done for the different buildings and you will, you will be getting them brought to you, um, after tonight, after we get them all signed and we will be delivering them to you. So, thank you very much. So here is the proclamation. Whereas public safety officers put their lives on the line every day to protect the lives and safety of others. And whereas often we take for granted that we will be there when we need them, never thinking about the sacrifices they make or the tragedies they see. And whereas Adrian Police, Fire and Emergency Services Personnel are not just employees. They are members of our community, our friends, our family and our neighbors. And whereas the past year has presented us all with many challenges and hardships. And whereas our public safety personnel have been on the front lines during these challenges, just as they have always been and always will be. Now therefore, the Adrian City Commission hereby honors and thanks the Adrian Police, Fire and Emergency Services Personnel for their bravery, their professionalism and their commitment to the citizens of Adrian. So thank you very much. It, we know it's been a very rough year of, of many different situations and we, we just cannot thank you enough and you, you keep us all safe and, and healthy and we just thank you very much for all that you have done. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I was just wondering if it was okay if any of them had anything they'd like to share with us, if this would be a good time. I think it's important, yeah, that we hear from them. We'd love to hear from any of you of how this year has gone. They're all going to be shy.
I won't be shy, Commissioner. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
All right. I, I think you guys have a pretty good idea of how this year has gone. Definitely. Thank you for the acknowledgement. You know, everyone in every profession has had to make sacrifices, adaptations for this year. Police, however, you know, while most of us have been learning to use Zoom and work from home, we, we haven't had any change in that regard. So I think that's probably been the most difficult part. So it, it's certainly nice to be acknowledged. Thank you very much. And, uh, we will definitely hang up that proclamation. Thank you.
I can make a comment. Kind of on, on the same line. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, as, as Chief Emrick said, definitely a challenging year for the, the Fire and Police Departments. But I can say that, uh, I'm very proud because none of the firefighters ever doubted, you know, doing their job and, and, uh, coming to work, even knowing that, uh, many days there were well over half the patients that transported, uh, were going to be COVID positive. And kind of knowing the, the, the chances they were taking. So kind of a, um, nice proclamation to, to recognize that and then recognize that, that, uh, the city is very well taken care of. So thank you for that.
Thank you once again for, for all of your service to our community and, and all that you do and sacrifice. You know, we, we get holidays off. You don't. We know that. There's, there's never a day off and we know this year's been very difficult. So thanks once again. Moving on to communications. C1 is from Finance. It is the November Revenue and Expenditure Report. Are there any Commissioner comments or questions on that? Moving on the regular agenda, Resolution R21-001 is from Human, Human Resources. It is a resolution to authorize the adoption of benefit plan adoption and addendums for the existing defined benefit and defined contribution plans under the municipal employees retirement system. Before I open that up for public comment, I would like to have our Human Resources Director Heather Lasky, please address exactly what this is and explain it. Thank you.
Sure. Um, so each month, the city is required to report certain information to MERS, which they use when figuring our employee pension calculations. MERS has recently required that each municipality that they work with formally define what compensation is included and not included, um, for pension purposes. When we're talking about employee wages, um, and they're asking, they're, they're asking municipalities to do this just so that they have it on file for the future. I just want to point out, there's a lot of paperwork attached. Um, so I'm sure it looks like, um, a, a lot of information, but we're not making any changes to any plans. This is not a change in any procedures. And we're not changing how or what we actually report to MERS every month. What we're doing is just, um, formally defining it. Um, so MERS has a paper record, uh, because what happens is if there's any sort of question that they have about, um, wages that were reported for a given month. It takes a lot of research for them to reach out to us. And, uh, so having that formally defined, um, you know, on file with them, they're, they're asking each, each city that they work with to do that. So that's all this is, is just formalizing what we're already doing.
Thank you. At this time, um, is there, can I, I'm sorry. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Watson.
Support, yes.
Robin, did you do Gauss on that for the support? Okay, thanks. Um, are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R21-002 is from the City Clerk. It is a resolution to approve dual purpose permits for WPL Industries LLC at 1201 East Beecher Street, Adrian, Michigan. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Strayer.
Support Roberts.
Are there any public comments? Are there any Commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
At this time, we will have public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address.
Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. To all of you Commissioners and staff and friends. Happy New Year. May God bless you in 2021 and may it be better than 2020.
Thanks, Don.
Hearing no more public comment, I'm going to move on. Are there any Commissioner comments?
Just make one brief comment, Mayor.
Commissioner Strayer, go ahead.
That is, uh, I, I really appreciate you, uh, having the proclamation tonight for the police and firefighters, uh, very appropriate. But I would like to say, I think we need to, to extend a little bit of love to the Public Works Department. This is the season when water mains break all the time. And if you've never seen what goes into fixing those water mains, you wouldn't want to do it. It's, it's not a fun job and it's never on a good day. And, uh, I've noticed a few of them have already broken this winter and, uh, I was thinking of those guys the other day. So I think we just need to give them some love too.
Commissioner Gauss.
You have a statement that I'd like to make tonight. For anyone who was listening to our last meeting, uh, God, it seems like a month ago. It may have been. I made some comments regarding my displeasure with our Director of Parks and Engineering, Matt Tomazuski. I had previously requested information from Matt and although seven weeks had passed since my request, I had not been provided with what I needed. Consequently, I made my comments and I made them publicly. Subsequently, I was made aware that Matt had in fact researched the answer to my question. And he'd sent it on to his manager, expecting the administrator to pass it on to me. Unfortunately, because of a misunderstanding, I never received the information. Although I have publicly apologized to Matt privately, I'm sorry, I have apologized to Matt privately. I felt that it was necessary to apologize to him publicly in the same form that I used to embarrass him. So Pat, Matt, let me once again tell you that I'm sorry and I hope that all of us can avoid these kinds of miscommunications in the future. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment and I'm picking, picking backing off of Commissioner Strayer is that, sorry, my lights go off in my office. That I would like to publicly thank Michelle Dewey for helping with that proclamation because it was my idea, but I'd never done a proclamation before. I had no idea what I was doing or how it should sound and she, uh, wrote it, sent it to me and it, and she did. sent it to me and, and she did a great job. So Michelle, thank you. Thank you for taking my idea and understanding what I was looking for and getting it all together. I really appreciate that assistance. So amongst other things, she does 101 jobs, but that was one of them and I appreciate that. The next one is, I don't know if I or anyone else has publicly thanked Robin Connor for this past year for being able to run two very contentious of the primary and the election. And I know I voted in person. My husband was a poll worker. And the amount of work and training that went into making sure that everything ran smoothly, all the behind the scenes stuff that, that if you didn't, weren't married to a poll worker, you wouldn't have a clue what they had to go through. The hours spent not only that day, which was, I don't know, he was gone at six and got home at 11. It's a long day to be standing on your feet for most of it and being able to handle all of that. So Robin, uh, thank you. And from my understanding, the audit that you went through came back clean. So good job. Congratulations.
It must be, it's a new year, so it's a night of thanks because I had already gotten some things together myself. I, I do believe he is still on the call as well, but I just really would like to thank Jim Berryman for spearheading up the Comstock Christmas Tree Walk and all that he does. He's down there all the time. He knew freezing rain. Jason Lawrence just told me yesterday in the grocery store that, that Jim Berryman knew that freezing rain was coming and went and disconnected trees. So there wouldn't be an issue and then ran back the next day and reconnected them. So he was there all the time and tirelessly just giving up hours upon hours so that we could have this amazing Comstock Christmas Tree Walk. So we thank you, Jim, for all that you do. And I would also like to thank Kiwanis, the Katnick Family and the Hickman Family. That Tree of Wishes was awesome. It was amazing. And you could see it from so far away. It was just a light. I think we needed that light this year. We needed something happy and nice to see. And I would also like to thank the Lenawee Board of Realtors for their donation so that we had music when we were down there. A lot of, there was a lot of people down there at that Christmas walk. Every time I drove by, anytime I went by, it just, there, it was just very, I think everybody needed that happiness and that, that holiday spirit this year. And so we just thank everyone for all their contributions and their donations. But a reminder, if you have a tree down there, that you need to have everything down by January 10th, which is this Saturday. You need to have that down because they are going to start taking the trees down. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. So, all right. Any other Commissioner comments? Hearing none, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Watson.
Support Strayer.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.